Okay, I guess it's time. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Thursday, June 4, 2020. The time is now 7:06. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 28, 2019 issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread COVID-19 pandemic, the public meeting for the remainder of the year 2020 have been changed to Zoom webinar or teleconference meetings until further notice. The public will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners' meeting and participate during the designated public comment portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dial-in numbers provided in the township website. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco is absent, excused. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Tucci. All present mayor except for Commissioner Patraco, he is absent, excused this evening. Thank you.
Around and see what we have this evening. I have a proclamation on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, and I will also be entering into the statement, the joint statement of the Nutley Board of Commissioners concerning the George Floyd death. So we will go into... Commissioner Kelly, what do you have this evening?
In terms of resolutions, or?
Yes.
Yes. I got five resolutions. One to recognize the Army's 245th birthday, one to celebrate Flag Day, June 14. June is also Men's Health Month, it's also PTSD Awareness Month, and June 27 is PTSD Awareness Day, and June is also Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have the public hearing on the introduced budget. We also have... I have an ordinance which is on the cap band for the last meeting. We also have resolutions. One is amendment to the settlement agreement on ARCOA, a refund to... on three related to just an early prepayment that we have to give back to them, a raffle refund, and then also the third quarter resolution, given the fact that the state's behind on the reviewing municipal budgets. We won't be able to adopt tonight, but we do need a third quarter resolution to collect taxes for the third quarter. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Scarpelli.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a word of professional services contract to Defoe Associates, which is to develop an RFP for our recycling that we have to go out the bid for. I have a change order, number one, with Tilcon New York for the resurfacing of Highfield Lane, which is decreasing the amount of $8,757 and change. Authorize the municipal clerk to advertise for an RFP for the marketing of recycling materials. Approve the submission of a grant application and a grant contract with the DOT for the Washington Avenue Improvement Project, Park Avenue to Nutley Avenue. Authorize the adoption of the 2020 Essex County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which mostly deals with floodplain management. And the last resolution endorses the submission of 2019 municipal recycling tonnage grant application and designate Salvatore Ferraro as our recycling coordinator. That's all I have there.
I'll take Commissioner Patraco's resolution. He has a contract extension award to turn out uniforms for police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment through December 31, 2020 for a total of $60,500. It's my understanding this evening that before we get to our regular business, it's listed on the agenda, that we need a brief executive session for reasons of personnel and potential litigation.
Yes.
I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Move second. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We're a Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss potential litigation and personnel matters. Be it further resolved at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The time is 7:11.
Thank you.
And as I saw, the other corner was opposite. My father. Next to my father's hair. She was laying with his hair lying here. That's how I found out that his mother's hair was here. Um. Got some of that. Weird. We should. I have a hat. I'm. It's all of me that gets a word from the on the bright side.
I guess I know we got a little bit of a problem there. Well, I'm not there.
It's. Hey, if you see a good person, you should give us a shout. She's even trying to tell me to stop. He's just trying to keep his voice down. It's like I'm trying to get something else.
I'm scared.
That's a scary. How much is a size issue to me in pressure? On the air, the powerful TV. Oh, we've covered thirty seven pages. Six seven. But it's easy to make. Including size issue and pressure. But it's easy.
Trying to get to get to the underwriting. And trying to. Trying. Do not try it.
The one. It's. I'm. 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 I'm.
I'm. I'm. This is why I wish I could. This is why I'm. And what comes after. I do. She's.
I think someone already. It's kind of responsible. It looks. Now around. Creating back from time now. Or watching some of this. Before he can find her. It's. Just. It's.
I'm. I'm. It's. Why is that? Really? It's not here. Here's the secret. Me.
She might fucking be. I. My sister saw. Between the mother and his wife. Last. Well. Can you not? Absolutely. You know, it's one hundred and fifty. So why? The. And. Uh. I don't think you go. You. You. I'm. I'm. I think.
I. I turn. Sure. Turn.
So. Yeah. I'm. Um. I have it. I have it. See. Yeah.
Okay, we're back. Thank you all very much. Before we left, I believe we're up to minutes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for April 21st, 2020. I need a motion, please. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Scarpelli? Mayor Tucci? And that's it for minutes.
Thank you. We're going to take a few things out of order this evening in light of some of the current events. What I'd like to do is read into the record the joint statement of the Nutley Board of Commissioners concerning the George Floyd incident in Minnesota. "On behalf of the Nutley Board of Commissioners and the Nutley Police Chief, we extend our deepest condolences to the family, loved ones, and friends of George Floyd and to people everywhere who are aggrieved by his death. We, like so many others, have watched the disturbing video of George Floyd's arrest in Minneapolis, which led to his untimely death. The entire Nutley community is greatly saddened by this event, as well as the tragic events currently striking our nation. The Nutley Board of Commissioners condemn, denounce, and reject the actions of the individuals responsible and join in the collective sense of national sorrow that the death of George Floyd has brought on our society as a whole. Police officers, like all public servants, are held to a high standard that has as its foundation empathy and the mutuality of respect. They have chosen a profession like no other and have sworn to uphold the law and protect and serve everyone, regardless of who they are, what they look like, or what they believe, at great personal risk for their own lives. The residents of Nutley should rest assured that we will never tolerate the behavior that resulted in Mr. Floyd's death. The video is upsetting, disappointing, and infuriating. It does not show the policing standards we know and expect in this community. Policing is an honorable profession filled with honorable public servants who treat all citizens with fairness and equality. However, it is clear we can and will grow as a community and not be afraid to call out injustice. Our police department is committed to protecting life and serving the community even at the cost of their own lives. We reaffirm our commitment to all Nutley residents that we will continue to be a safe and welcoming township for all people, regardless of their race, national origin, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, or religion. Over the past several days, some peaceful demonstrations in cities across the country have turned violent. We respect everyone's First Amendment rights. However, we are asking our citizens to do their part in helping us protect our communities by refraining from violence. Our community stands united to condemn the shameful acts exhibited on the video and to urge people to remain engaged in healthy, safe, nonviolent discussion and discourse. Racism and discrimination have no place in our society. We will continue to work to ensure a civil community where everyone is treated equal, the rule of law prevails, and fair and equal justice serves as a guiding principle. People across the country are rightfully demanding justice and accountability, and we believe as Americans that injustice is unacceptable and that justice will be served. Finally, in the words of Martin Luther King, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. This statement was crafted by each and every Commissioner that sits up here. I just have the privilege of reading it this evening. At this point, what I'd like to do is have a moment of silence for George Floyd, his family, his friends, and also all of those we have lost to the COVID virus. Thank you very much. Moving right along again, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to read this proclamation concerning Pride Month. "Whereas the Nutley Board of Commissioners recognizes that the pursuit of equality, respect, and inclusion for all individuals is an attainable goal, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights and that no one should live in fear or face persecution and violence arising from sexual orientation or gender identity, and whereas the township of Nutley celebrates and encourages diversity and inclusion within our community, and whereas LGBTQ+ individuals have had a measurable impact and make vital contributions to our country, including cultural, political, civic, military, and economic among other fields, and whereas the Township of Nutley is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our community, and whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination, biases, and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite value and worth and that human rights are protected under our U.S. Constitution, and whereas the Board of Commissioners call upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work together to foster a warm and hospitable place for all to live, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Nutley's LGBTQ+ community..."
Okay, we're back. Thank you all very much. Before we left, I believe we're up to minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for April 21st, 2020. I need a motion, please. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Thank you. We're gonna take a few things out of order this evening in light of some of the current events. What I'd like to do is read into the record the joint statement of the Nutley Board of Commissioners concerning the George Floyd incident in Minnesota. "On behalf of the Nutley Board of Commissioners and the Nutley Police Chief, we extend our deepest condolences to the family, loved ones, and friends of George Floyd and to people everywhere who are aggrieved by his death. We, like so many others, have watched the disturbing video of George Floyd's arrest in Minneapolis, which led to his untimely death. The entire Nutley community is greatly saddened by this event, as well as the tragic events currently striking our nation. The Nutley Board of Commissioners condemn, denounce, and reject the actions of the individuals responsible and join in the collective sense of national sorrow that the death of George Floyd has brought on our society as a whole. Police officers, like all public servants, are held to a high standard that has as its foundation empathy and the mutuality of respect. They have chosen a profession like no other and have sworn to uphold the law and protect and serve everyone, regardless of who they are, what they look like, or what they believe, at great personal risk for their own lives. The residents of Nutley should rest assured that we will never tolerate the behavior that resulted in Mr. Floyd's death. The video is upsetting, disappointing, and infuriating. It does not show the policing standards we know and expect in this community. Policing is an honorable profession, filled with honorable public servants who treat all citizens with fairness and equality. However, it is clear we can and will grow as a community and not be afraid to call out injustice. Our police department is committed to protecting life and serving the community, even at the cost of their own lives. We reaffirm our commitment to all Nutley residents that we will continue to be a safe and welcoming township for all people, regardless of their race, national origin, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, or religion. Over the past several days, some peaceful demonstrations in cities across the country have turned violent. We respect everyone's First Amendment rights. However, we are asking our citizens to do their part in helping us protect our communities by refraining from violence. Our community stands united to condemn the shameful acts exhibited on the video and to urge people to remain engaged in healthy, safe, nonviolent discussion and discourse. Racism and discrimination have no place in our society. We will continue to work to ensure a civil community where everyone is treated equal, the rule of law prevails, and fair and equal justice serves as a guiding principle. People across the country are rightfully demanding justice and accountability, and we believe as Americans that injustice is unacceptable and that justice will be served. Finally, in the words of Martin Luther King, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." This statement was crafted by each and every commissioner that sits up here. I just have the privilege of reading it this evening. At this point, what I'd like to do is have a moment of silence for George Floyd, his family, his friends, and also all of those we have lost to the COVID virus. Thank you very much. Moving right along, again, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to read this proclamation concerning Pride Month. "Whereas the Nutley Board of Commissioners recognizes that the pursuit of equality, respect, and inclusion for all individuals is an attainable goal, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and that no one should live in fear or face persecution and violence arising from sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas the township of Nutley celebrates and encourages diversity and inclusion within our community, and whereas LGBTQ+ individuals have had a measurable impact and make vital contributions to our country, including cultural, political, civic, military, and economic, among other fields; and whereas the township of Nutley is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our community; and whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination, biases, and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite value and worth and that human rights are protected under our U.S. Constitution; and whereas the Board of Commissioners call upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work together to foster a warm and hospitable place for all to live; and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Nutley's LGBTQ+ community, and it's an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build understanding and acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nutley Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of June 2020 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Questioning, and Plus Pride Month throughout the Township of Nutley." And this is on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Thank you. We will now move into reports. Commissioner Petrocco is not with us this evening, but he has a public safety report for the month of April 2020. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for June 4th, 2020. Public Affairs: $85,367.09 Revenue and Finance: $2,616,760.98 Public Safety: $54,612.18 Public Works: $76,358.86 Parks and Public Property: $695.20 Water Utility: $401,667,026 Payroll for May 15th, 2020: Regular Payroll Total: $780,360.34 Overtime Payroll Total: $18,313.68 COVID-19 Overtime Payroll Total: $26,040.16 Total Payroll for May 15th, 2020 is $824,714.18 Payroll for May 29th, 2020: Regular Payroll Total is $828,361.81 Overtime Payroll Total is $19,551.94 COVID-19 Overtime Payroll Total: $19,842.88 Total Payroll for May 29th, 2020 is $867,756.63 for a grand total of $5,537,932.38
Move the bills?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you. We will now have public comment on agenda items only.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like me to read the public comment?
Please.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should state their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board of Commissioners, persons shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Right now, we have one person. First, this is Mr. Moore, I guess.
Yes. Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mayor Tucci, I have two questions about the bill list.
You're probably on mute.
I don't think so. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
We can see him on the screen.
I know, but I don't see him.
I can hear.
Mr. Moore. Try now.
Can you hear me now? Is any better? You have an R. You have me muted, I think. Can you hear me?
So, I'm gonna let Rhonda in first. We can always come back to Mr. Moore.
Hi, can you hear me?
Rhonda, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me?
That's made plans.
Can you hear me? I have my camera. There it is. Can you hear me? Hello?
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Stal, do you know why she's not able to hear? Rhonda, can you say something?
Can you hear me?
Is your mute off?
Yes, my mute is off. Can you hear me? Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Rory can hear me.
Hi, Rhonda.
Hi, Rory.
At least you and I will talk to each other.
Okay, can you hear me now? Somebody has the mute.
All right. Who do you want to go first, Mr. Mayor? Rhonda, you want to go first?
I defer to Rory. Why don't you let Rory go first?
Hey, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mayor Tucci, I have two questions on the bill list, if that's okay. On the first page, we have New Jersey League of Municipalities. I believe it's $400 and something dollars. What do we pay in that for?
I've been informed that that's our dues as a township.
Okay, that's, okay. I'll save that for the other portion for it. And the Essex County Bar Association, we paid for that as well. What do we pay in that for? It's on the first page. It's just below the League of Municipalities.
Alan, are you aware of what that payment is?
It's not for me, so I don't know who it's for.
Mr. Moore, I don't know what that is at this moment, but I'll be happy to get back to you.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Rhonda?
Okay, Rhonda, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. On behalf of Nutley Pride LGBTQ Advocacy Group, and also on behalf of myself, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Tucci, Commissioner Scarpelli, Commissioner Evans. I don't see Commissioner Petrocco there, but to Commissioner Petrocco, Commissioner Kelly, for proclaiming June 2020 as a month of pride. It's hard to believe that a year has gone by already since then Mayor Scarpelli issued Nutley's first Pride Month proclamation. And as you recall, at the June 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, Town Hall was full that day, and when Mayor Scarpelli finished reading Nutley's inaugural Pride proclamation, there wasn't a dry eye in the house. One year later, I co-founded Nutley's LGBTQ advocacy group with Patrick Kozlacki. Nutley Pride's mission is to bring together the Nutley community, sponsors, residents, and allies for events regarding LGBTQ representation and inclusion in Nutley. Since that time, LGBTQ Nutleyites, both home and away, have become more connected, deported, included, and today, celebrated. We had so many plans for Pride Month 2020 in Nutley, but the pandemic has challenged us all to recalibrate. To his credit, Mayor Tucci came through for our community by lighting up Nutley Town Hall in the colors of pride. And I'd like to thank you, Mayor Tucci, and the finest Parks Department in New Jersey, led by Frank DeMayo, and special thanks to Parks Department employee Anthony Gagliardo, who probably knows more about rainbow-colored lights than he ever anticipated. And we would be remiss if we did not mention here today, June 4th, 2020, during a time of great social unrest, the first pride wasn't a party or a celebration. It was a rebellion led by queer people of color in an effort to achieve freedom from systemic oppression. In the words of Senator Kamala Harris, who spoke about the queer people of color who gave us pride, because Marsha P. Johnson, Forma Delavere, Sylvia Rivera, and countless other LGBTQ people had the courage to stand up for their rights, we now celebrate Pride Month. Those pivotal events showed what we know to be true to this day. No one should be left to fight alone. And with that, I want to let our brothers and sisters of color know they are not alone in Nutley. Nutley Pride LGBTQ advocacy stands with you. Thank you.
The thank you, thank you for all your input, beginning during Mayor Scarpelli's tenure. But I just need, I appreciate the thank yous for myself and Frank DeMayo and Anthony Gagliardo, who actually did the work. But all of this happened with the consent and approval of all the commissioners that are here this evening. So they share in proclaiming Pride Month and for lighting up Town Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan? Mr. Markowitz, you're muted.
I'll take my hand down. Sorry about that. Hey, good evening. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I'll go ahead and take my hand down.
Okay, thank you. Board of Commissioner announcements. I have a bunch of announcements this evening. At our last meeting, I mentioned that I was contemplating appointing a committee of commissioners and interested individuals to help not only our businesses, but help with our school situation and the overcrowding there. So I'd like to announce the folks that I will be appointing to the business committee. And this is not only to help our businesses open up, because the Governor's Office allowed them to open up as of June 15th. And through the good offices of Commissioner Scarpelli, we received all of the protocols that the employers need to follow and the customers need to follow, and the different options that we can exercise here. So in the interest of getting our businesses open, and especially our restaurants, I will be appointing to our business committee Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Kelly, Jim Gruder of Jim Dandy's, Nella Chichino of Mama Vittorio, and Chris DiMaggio of the Franklin Steakhouse. They will be coming back to the Board of Commissioners, and we will not be ending this meeting this evening. We're going to keep it open in the event that we need to pass resolutions and/or take any other actions to facilitate them opening and getting back into business. In addition to that, I also mentioned that I was going to be appointing a schools committee to foster greater collaboration with our Board of Ed. And on that committee, we will have Commissioner Scarpelli, Commissioner Petrocco, our former principal of the middle school, John Colicchio, once he accepts, because I wasn't able to get in touch with him, but I figured I'd use this pulpit to kind of force him into doing it, Charlie Kozinski, the president of our Board of Education, and Joe Haynes, who is one of our local architects and who's very involved in the community. Now, these committees are not exclusive. We'll be rotating folks in and out as necessary. I wanted to move as quickly as possible, because I knew the Governor's Office was going to be coming down with some announcements as to when the restaurants could open up again, and how they could serve, and how we go about that. But we will also be cycling in other business owners and restaurateurs from some of the other areas in town. We are yet to make a decision on fireworks. We're still awaiting some guidance from the Governor's Office. I know Essex County has canceled their fireworks for this year and all of their concerts. I'm not prepared to do that yet. That doesn't mean that we won't do that. But if we can hold our fireworks with the proper protocols in place and safety issues, then we're looking to do that. Also, our Camp Nutley, where we have upwards of 150 to 200 children attending, we're still looking at how we can make that happen this year. It's very difficult, and there are a lot of different moving parts to that, but we will be getting back to you on that. On June 9th, in collaboration with Essex County, we will be holding COVID testing at 44 Park Avenue, the Parks Department parking lot, from 4 o'clock to 6:30. You can go online, www.essexcovid.org, to register. They will be accepting 250 people for testing. I also received a request from Reverend Le Duke, from Vincent Methodist, requesting that we come up with a temporary site, all right, a temporary memorial for folks that we've lost to the COVID virus. So we will be working as a commission with Reverend Le Duke to try and come up with something so that people can come and reflect through those family, friends, and other associates that we've lost to this. So we'll be working with the Nutley clergy to do that. We also will be participating as a county in the contact tracking program through the state. Essex County was selected as one of two counties, I believe it was Essex and Mercer, to participate in the pilot program, and that pilot program will occur through the good offices of Commissioner Kelly, and the Health Department, and guidance will be forthcoming from the State Department of Health. That'll begin on June 15th, and we will be going live statewide with contact tracing on June 29th of this year. And that's all I have for now. Commissioner Evans? Nothing? Mr. Kelly?
Nothing as well.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm extremely proud to be a part of this Board of Commissioners in both our joint statement and our proclamation for Pride Month. I think it shows the kind of township that we are, inclusive and welcoming. So I'm very proud to be a part of this commission.
Thank you. I think we all are. Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. Ordinance introductions. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance introductions for Commissioner Evans.
Ordinance, we have none, I'm sorry. Ordinance is on second reading?
Yes, we have one ordinance. We have a public hearing on the budget. The ordinance is the adoption of establishing a cap bank that we do every year. This is a memorandum entry. It does not affect the budget at all this year. And we do this as a matter of good bookkeeping and good account management. The cap bank is something that's by paper. It expires every two years. So we keep renewing it in the event something catastrophic, absolutely catastrophic, was to happen that required us to have a significant appropriation, the cap bank would allow us to do that. We've never had that event, including Sandy and everything else that's come up. We've never had that event, but it's also part of just good planning. We've never had that event, but it's also part of just good planning. So that's what this ordinance is about tonight. Public comment?
Open the public hearing?
Yes. I have to move that to open a public hearing?
Yes.
I move then to open a public hearing.
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Abstain.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli? Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
To the public comment?
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this?
I'm gonna have to get Sal roller skates.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Alan? I just have one question, Mr. Evans. If for some unknown reason that the state does not provide funds to the, to the municipality for the budget as they promised, would we have to tap into that budget to mitigate that shortfall for this year?
Tamara, I'd be happy to answer that. This is a, a, a public hearing specifically on establishing a cap act.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I just wanted to see that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Abstain.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Abstain.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner, you want to continue?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we, earlier in the first meeting, first, I think May 5th, we introduced our municipal budget. The budget reflected a zero increase in the tax rate to taxpayers this year. And so included in that budget was recognizing that we did have appropriation, expense increases because of contractual obligations and, and some other things that are listed in the presentation. We also had revenues that we needed to address, including shortfalls in revenues because of the various closures in town arising from, from COVID, such as lower parking meter revenues, code revenues, municipal court, and so on. So in that presentation, we, we covered how we were going to absorb as a board the revenue losses, as well as how we were going to offset the revenue, the appropriation increases. So we, we were able to do that by releasing a reserve, actually related to tax appeals, which related to the ability, our ability to eliminate tax appeal risk on the Hovmiroche site that we've talked about before. So that enabled us to zero out any increase this year in the budget. In the presentation, we also talked about the fact that while the township has a, the ability to borrow over 130 million in, in bonds, our outstanding bonds were 13.7 million and actually are down 1.7 million from 2015 and are, with an overall lower interest rate, which actually lowered our debt service. We do have contingencies that are related to the budget, which is in the event of shortfalls in tax collections. Also, while the state has actually given us a written commitment and approved our aid, we generally don't receive that aid until the end of the year. So there are some possible future developments at the state level that could also cause us to have a little bit of risk. But overall, that was our budget presentation. But for tonight, the, we have a budget that requires us to raise $41,872,000 in taxes and that, for the municipality. So we can move to open conversation.
Let's see, the motion, open the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Alan, we'll go to the videotape. Go ahead, can you hear us?
I can, I can, you can hear me?
Go ahead. Just lost her.
She's off the screen.
I think you're having technical difficulties. Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Evans, I have a question regarding 2020 second quarter taxes. What percentage of those have been paid?
Tammy, please repeat that. What percentage of what?
Of the second quarter taxes for 2020 have been paid.
At this point, 94.2%.
Okay. And how much of the reserve was released to mitigate a tax, to absorb the other deficiencies?
In tax collections?
Well, you, you had mentioned that the town had a reserve and you had released some of it.
Yes, we've, yes, we released, included in the budget, we released 1.2 million dollars.
1.2 million dollars, okay. And right now, the town needs to raise $41,832,000 in taxes. And are you saying that will result in a tax increase at this time or not?
No, we, we do not have a tax increase at the municipal level that we're projecting or including in the tax rate for this year. The tax rate, as you know, is comprised of a piece for the library, a piece for the county, a piece for the school, and the municipality. The, the increases related to the county, the library, and the school, excuse me, and the municipality are projected to be flat. We do have a, an increase for the school, which is 2.7%. So because only one component of the taxes that we have to collect is increasing, the overall increase on the tax rate is about 1.2% for the total town. What's important, Tammy, to also remember, in my role as the Revenue and Finance Commissioner, while I sit on the municipal board and we focus in on the five departments, my department has the responsibility to send out a single bill and collect taxes for the county, for the school, for the library, as well as for the municipality. And then we, we actually make payments to those individual boards, and that's all done by statute.
And, and so with all of this, is there a plan B? Should we not receive the remainder of transition aid from the state?
So if, if we, if there is a, later in the year, if there is a, an issue with collecting that money, you know, we will be prepared to, to address it. And we're in discussions as a board related to that now as, to in effect establish a contingency plan in the event that happens. If we have a shortfall of taxes, tax collections, that's significant. Coupled with a loss of the state aid, that would be, have a dramatic effect on our tax collections. That could be significant. So we, as a, as a board, we would not be able to cover all of that because the, of our obligation to pay the county and the school. The, the collection risk is the, is, is on the municipality. So we would have to ultimately, if it became that drastic, we would also have to look at a financing plan.
And would you, at that point, consider releasing more of the reserves? Because I see we have 40,538,000 in reserves. Is that correct?
That's, that's not correct, no.
How much in reserves do we have?
We have some. We have a few, few million dollars, but they're there for particular reasons. And so there's not really a free reserve. So for example, our tax appeal reserve is a real reserve. We just, in the light of this, this calamity, we release some of those funds. It just, we might need to reevaluate that in a future year to put that money back. So we don't have significant amounts of free reserves. And we have a policy that we have always followed for the last 18 years that if the money that we don't spend is returned to the taxpayers in the form of what we call, we call applied fund balance, and the amount that's already been applied for this current year is $5 million.
And, okay, and the question I have now is, you said you have a few million dollars in reserve. Would you be more specific with an amount of how much we have in reserves?
Not at this time.
Is there any particular reason?
Because the, the reserves that are there are guided, they're under guidance from the state. And in anything that I would be looking at, I would need permission from the state to release them.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? This is Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Am I audible?
Yes.
Okay, you're very faint. Mr. Evans, I understood, if I understood correctly, that you're having a discussion with the commissioners now for the possibilities of a, a tax shortfall or, or the state not contributing money as they've had promised. Why is that discussion not public?
Because it involves contract negotiations, potential personnel, and we need to follow very specific guidance and rules to protect everyone's interest.
How, how is it the contract, the contracts are already signed, they're in place. I would think as, if, as a Board of Commissioners, that you would have some alternatives or some, some specific guidance that you can do to minimize the tax increase, if there is any.
So the, the specifics of our union contracts would be dealt with by the commissioners of those departments and with legal counsel and advice, right? But the contracts are in place and the, there are obligated contractual obligations for, for them.
I, I understand the contracts. I'm not disputing that. I guess the, the question I'm trying to get at is, we, we can't, you would have to go back to unions, to negotiations if you had to change the contracts. But I'm being more specific or more broad about this is, have you come up with any financial plans, any, any contingency that you can reduce cost almost immediately to, to minimize a tax increase if there was one?
So our goal is not to increase, increase the tax rate this year, and I don't anticipate doing that. So we came into this year saying there will not be an increase in the tax rate. We will hold to that. So I don't forecast having to change that assumption at this time. If we have a consequence where we have a cash collection issue or an aid issue, we are preparing to look at that as we look at the balance of the year. But I don't anticipate a tax increase.
My only concern, my last question would be, is that I understand that the school aid, we Nutley lost several million dollars, I believe it was. And I would imagine that's going to impact the school budget. That would be somewhat of an increase, which would be, ultimately be some type of an increase to property owners. Has that been addressed at all? I realize that's the on the Board of Education side, but eventually it will come over to you for collections.
So exactly. So if, I'm not aware of the fact that the school lost several million dollars. I know they've released aid from the state, school aid from the state. So I'm not sure that's a correct assumption at this point because I haven't been advised of that. Right now, the school budget calls for a 2.7% increase that I'm not aware of, any other increases that are projected for the year.
Okay, thank you.
No other hands are up.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
I have to read the adoption of the budget, right? There's a sentence, oh no, I can't do, I'm sorry. That's right. I can't adopt, just to be aware. That's right. Sorry. Normally, we would adopt this evening. We're not able to adopt this evening because of the COVID delays. The state is administratively behind in reviewing the local budgets. So once we get clearance from the state, we'll come back and adopt the budget.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we'll move into resolutions. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I have five resolutions to read tonight. The first one, whereas meeting in Philadelphia on June 14th, 1775, the Continental Congress formed the Continental Army as a means for the 13 unified American colonies to fight the forces of Britain. Whereas General George Washington was unanimously elected commander in chief of the new army the next day, and he would lead the colonies to victory and independence. Whereas since its inception, the United States Army has developed leaders of character who have gone on to serve the nation and our community. It currently provides more than 150 different career paths in art, science, intelligence, combat, aviation, engineering, law, and war. Whereas the United States armies and it's more than one, the United States Army and its more than 1 million soldiers stand watch for the country day and night against all enemies. They are respected around the world for their bravery and vigor. Whereas from the revolution to the Civil War, to the world, to the world wars, to the present day, the township of Nutley is thankful for and is proud to support the United States Army. On the occasion of the Army's 245th birthday, the township remembers those who have sacrificed to serve their nation in the Army and thanks and recognizes the Army, Army veterans who call Nutley home today. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognizes and celebrates the United States Army on its 245th birthday. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. Whereas on June 14th, 1777, by resolution of the Second Continental Congress, the United States flag was adopted. Whereas on June 14th, 1777, the Second Continental Congress decreed that our nation's flag shall be 13 stripes, alternate red and white, that the Union be 13 stars, white in a field of blue, representing a new constellation. Whereas on June 14th, 1916, President Woodrow Wilson issued a proclamation to officially establish observance of Flag Day. Whereas on August 3rd, 1949, National Flag Day, June 14th, was declared by an act of Congress. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognizes and celebrates our nation's flag. Be it further resolved June 14th, 2020 as Flag Day in the Township of Nutley. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. Whereas despite the advances in medical technology and research, men can Whereas despite the advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of almost five years less than women, with African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. Many of these deaths can be prevented by men eating proper diets, exercising, and getting regular health checks, including prostate examinations. Whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing the rates of mortality from disease. And whereas, men who are educated about the value of preventative health practices will be more likely to participate in health screenings addressing heart disease, diabetes, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. Whereas the third Sunday, Sunday of June is customarily celebrated as Father, Father's Day for all fathers and father figures in the lives of Nutley residents, the importance of reminding these role models and all men of the importance of proper health cannot be understated. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognize the month of June as Men's Health Month and encourage all male residents of Nutley to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts so as to live longer and healthier lives, so as to continue to be positive influences in the lives of all those that they touch. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, is associated with chemical changes in the body's hormonal systems and autonomic nervous system, and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, insomnia, avoidance, hypervigilance, anxiety, and depression. Whereas despite its treatability, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to a lack of awareness of this condition and the persistent stigma associated with mental health conditions. Whereas raising awareness of this condition is necessary to remove the stigma and to encourage those suffering to seek proper and timely treatment that may save their lives. Whereas exposure to trauma can lead to PTSD. Whereas PTSD is significantly increased by the risk of, whereas PTSD significantly increases the risk of anxiety, depression, suicide, homelessness, and drug and alcohol-related disorders and deaths, especially if left untreated. Whereas public perceptions of PTSD or other mental health disorders create unique challenges for those seeking employment. Whereas the larger medical community, both private and public, have made significant advances in the identification, prevention, diagnosis, and treatment of PTSD and the symptoms of PTSD, but many challenges remain. Whereas increased understanding of PTSD can help diminish the stigma attached to this mental health issue, and efforts are needed to find further ways to reduce this stigma, including an examination of how PTSD is discussed in the United States and a recognition that PTSD is a common injury that is treatable and repairable. Whereas the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces who proudly serve the nation and risk their lives to protect our freedom are, are at an increased risk of suffering from PTSD, deserve the investment of every possible resource to ensure their lasting physical, mental, and emotional well-being. Where combat, whereas combat-related PTSD stress among our men and women in the armed forces is significantly pronounced given that they are often exposed to highly traumatic events for weeks, months, and even years. Whereas between 10 and 30% of service members will develop PTSD within a year of leaving combat, and while, while others may not develop symptoms until years later. Whereas the Secretary of Veterans Affairs reports that in fiscal year 2014, more than 531,000 of nearly 6 million veterans who sought care at a medical facility of the Department of the Veterans Affairs received treatment for PTSD. Whereas all citizens suffering PTSD deserve our consideration, and those who are affected by PTSD from wounds, while, wounds received while protecting our freedom deserve our respect and special honor. Whereas PTSD can result from any number of stressors other than combat, including rape, sexual assault, battery, torture, confinement, child abuse, car accidents, train wrecks, plane crashes, bombings, or natural disasters, and affects approximately eight million adults in the United States annually. Whereas now the more, more than ever due to the trauma many victims, their families, first responders, and frontline workers have faced due to the, due to the ongoing global health crisis, emphasis needs to be placed on PTSD, mental health, counseling, and treatment. Whereas the designation of a post-traumatic stress disorder awareness month and a post-traumatic stress disorder day will raise public awareness about the issues related to PTSD, reduce the stigma associated with PTSD, and help ensure those suffering from the invisible wounds of trauma receive proper treatment. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognize the month of June as Post-Traumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Month. Be it further resolved June 27th, 2020, as Post-Traumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Day. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners supports the entire medical community to educate members of the armed forces, veterans, frontline medical workers, first responders, first responders, and all those who have been exposed to trauma, their families and friends, and the public about the causes, symptoms, and treatment of PTSD. Be it further resolved that all are encouraged to bring awareness to those with PTSD and encourage fellow citizens to provide support and remove the stigma associated with this disorder. Be it further resolved, anyone who needs assistance with PTSD or anyone that knows someone suffering from PTSD is encouraged to reach out to the Nutley Department of Public Affairs for resources and guidance or review the attached resource guide. And there's an attached guide here that will be made public. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Last one from me. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain causing deterioration in memory and thinking, as well as judgment and reasoning ability. It also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to perform self-care. Whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death in U.S. adults and kills more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, approximately 5.8 million people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's, and whereas every 65 seconds, some in the United States, someone in the United States develops the disease. Whereas more than 16 million Americans provide unpaid care for people with Alzheimer's or other dementia. And whereas in 2019, Alzheimer's and other dementia costs the nation $290 billion, and by the year 2050, these costs could rise as high as 1.1 trillion. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, and the State of New Jersey that the month of June be recognized as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that we recognize individuals, families, and friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes and a cure, and the educational programs and support services provide, provided by local and national Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's organizations. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. My first resolution is Resolution Number 12420. This, this resolution relates to affordable housing. As, at a previous meeting back in January, we approved our original settlement with the court. That was on January 14th, 2019, which had stipulated that we had a co-obligation for fair share housing on the Hoffler Roche site, as well as where there were nine units that were in town that made for a total of 64. This resolution supports an amendment to the settlement agreement that was signed in January of 2019, which reduces that original obligation to reduce the nine units so that the township only has an obligation to, to meet on the Hoffler Roche property. In order to execute that settlement, there is a payment by the owners of the properties in Nutley to the COA Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which funds will be used for rehabilitation for qualifying households in Nutley, which we'll be speaking about more in, in the very near, near future. The total contribution that has to be made to the trust fund is $450,000. So it's prudent for us because it eliminates a housing requirement that could have a, a negative consequence on our schools, and it also would affect the future tax valuation of these properties that we now relieve. So it's in, it's prudent for the, for the Board of Commissioners to consider this resolution. So I'll read in part. Whereas this original settlement agreement was approved by, by court order dated January 14th, 2019. Whereas subsequent to the court's approval of the original agreement, the parties identified various crediting issues with certain compliance mechanisms noted in the original settlement agreement and desired to amend the original settlement agreement in order to resolve the same. Whereas both the Fisher Housing Council and the court-appointed Special Master in Favor of this amendment to the original agreement. Whereas the Board of Commissioners finds it prudent to authorize this amendment to the original settlement agreement. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey as follows. One, the, the aforementioned recitals are hereby adopted and incorporated herein as if repeated in full. Two, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute, and the township clerk be and hereby is authorized to witness a first amended, a first amended amendment and restated settlement agreement resolving the township's judge, this, this settlement action in, in a form and content acceptable to the, to counsel for the township. That the township administration, planner, and counsel for the township be and are hereby authorized to undertake all reasonable and necessary steps to effectuate the foregoing. This resolution takes effect immediately. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The next resolution is a refund for an overpayment of taxes. The, it's a sizable amount. It's 400, $590,000. $587,000, $1,000 relates to an overpayment by the entree property that was made in error. So this resolution does hereby authorize the treasurer to refund overpayments of tax charges in a total amount of $590,505.13. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Then whereas the Nutley High School PTO had applications for on-premise raffles to be held this year, obviously with COVID, those raffles have been canceled. The cost of the raffle application is $20. All the events were canceled. So the township is agreeable to refunding to the Nutley High School PTO, a total amount of $60. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
My last resolution, whereas in light of the disruption caused by the coronavirus outbreak, the state delayed the adoption of the state fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget to September 30th, 2020. Whereas the Division of Local Governmental Services cannot certify state aid allocations to municipal budgets until state aid appropriations are, are known. And whereas the Department of Local Governmental Services cannot approve municipal budgets, and the county tax, County Board of Taxation cannot certify taxes until long after the June 30th deadline to process third quarter tax bills. Whereas without a certified tax rate, the tax collector of the township is unable to issue the preliminary final property tax bill, which would, is, would be normally issued at this time for the 2020 and 21, 2021 tax year. Whereas it is necessary for the township to, to issue an estimated bill covering the third quarter only. Please, many people think that that's the, the bill for both the third and fourth quarter, but it's only approval for the third quarter to meet our municipal school and county obligations. The township is able to do so through Chapter 72 Public Law 1994, NJSA 54-4-66.2. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey as follows. The tax collector of the township of Nutley is hereby authorized and directed to prepare and issue estimated tax bills for the township of Nutley for the third installment of 2020 taxes. The tax collector shall proceed and take such action as permitted and required by Chapter 72 Public Law 1994, NJSA 54, colon, 66.2, 66.3. The total estimated tax levy, tax levy for 2020 is hereby set at $119,156,237.87. The total estimated tax rate for 2020 is hereby set at $3, $3.67.7 cents per hundred. Again, that tax rate only includes a tax increase for the school district. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Scarpelli.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to retain the service of a consultant that specializes in recycling law and policy, provides consulting advice and services to the Department of Public Works for the marketing of recycling materials in the Township of Nutley. Whereas Wayne DeFeo, DeFeo Associates 15 Washington Valley Road, Warren Township, New Jersey, has submitted proposal for an hourly rate of $185 per hour, not to exceed $6,000. Now they will be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Wayne DeFeo of DeFeo Associates 15 Washington Valley Road, Warren Township as a professional service. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the clerk of the township and a notice in accordance with the local public contract, so that New Jersey shall be published in Nutley. So I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Whereas Nutley is a member of the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council. Whereas Nutley wishes to resurface Highfield Lane, half width between Washington Avenue and River Road, East White Terrace, and condo place in Nutley, New Jersey, and where contracts that exceed the bid threshold are required to be awarded by resolution. Whereas the township of Nutley entered into a contract, will till con New York for the amount of $97,550.30. And whereas change to order number one to the contract has been authorized for a decrease in the amount of $8,757.69. And whereas the original contract amount is being decreased in the amount of $8,757.69, be credited to the account GO4153401, reflected in adjusted contract price of $88,792.61. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the marketing of recycling materials collected from the Township of Nutley and received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commission Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey on Wednesday, June 24th, 2020, 11:00 a.m. prevailing time, which sign there where we open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
This is Resolution Number 12120. I'll read by title, Resolution of Approval to Submit a Grant Application and Execute a Grant Contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for Township of Nutley, Washington Avenue, Approving Project Park Avenue in Nutley, Evans. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Sorry, Mayor. It's okay. Resolution 12220, also read by title, authorizing the adoption of the 2020 Essex County, New Jersey Hazard Mitigation Plan, updated. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas mandatory source recycling, Recycling Act PL 1987, Chapter 102, has established a recycling fund for which tonnage grants may be made to municipalities in order to encourage local source separation in recycling programs. Whereas in the intent in the sphere of the mandatory source for separation in recycling act, to use tonnage grants to develop new recycling programs and to continue to expand existing programs. And whereas such resolution should be designated, the individual authorized to ensure that the application is properly completed and timely filed. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of Jersey, that Township of Nutley hereby endorses the submission of the 2019 Municipal Recycling Tonnage Grant Application to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and designate Salvatore Ferraro Recycling Quarter, Township of Nutley, to ensure the application is properly filed. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petrako has one resolution that I will read for him this evening. Whereas sealed bids for furnishing and delivering police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment were publicly opened and read on May 23rd, 2018. And whereas Turnout Uniforms, Inc. was the only bidder. And whereas, as per the original specification, the contract is for one year with two optional one-year extensions. with two optional one-year extensions. Therefore, the existing contract with Turnout Uniforms, Inc. should be extended to December 31, 2020, utilizing the second and last optional extension. And whereas funds in the amount of $48,000 are available in appropriation of Title 0-01310200, police and dispatcher maintenance and allowance, and funds in the amount of $12,500 are available in appropriation of Title 0-01310200, crossing guards allowance and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for furnishing and delivering police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment consistent with the 2020 Clothing Voucher Allocation be and is hereby awarded to Turnout Uniforms, Inc., 195 Patterson Avenue, Little Forest, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
That concludes our business for this evening. We will now open the meeting up to the public.
Would you like me to read the public comment? All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should state their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes.
Rory Moore, 462 Chest Street. You have a wicked reverb. Wow. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Mayor Tucci. I would like to reiterate, I was prepared to talk about the budget this evening. What I wanted to suggest this evening, and I asked on a payroll list about the money that we spent to New Jersey League of Municipalities. And that was a fee, that's what we get out of it, I imagine. Last year, Mr. Scarpelli had almost $3,000 that we paid to the League of Municipalities. And when I questioned it, he gave me a rather timid answer. Wasn't very good. So I had called the league the very next day. I got hold of the financial people down there, which were very, very helpful. And they said that we played pretty close to $3,000, and we received zero benefits from the money we paid. Additionally, last year, when they go for the two days down in Atlantic City, I believe we sent about 27 people down, and at least half of them stayed over one night, some over two nights, which the cost was prohibitive. I filed an open request to find out what did we gain from that expense? And the answer was nothing. I would like to suggest, as a new mayor, can you allow the public to respond, or at least participate in budget reductions? If you looked at just the fees that we paid to all these organizations, we, as a town, could save some money. Maybe not a lot, but at least it's a start to try to minimize what we're paying out. In May, we paid $5,200 to the Essex County Sheriff's Academy. I asked three people, what did we pay it for? And the answer was, nobody knew, but we paid $5,200. We also sent the chief to a seminar for international police chiefs, and I believe that was about $600. When is it going to stop? When do we have some type of fiscal responsibility to say, enough's enough? We do not have to participate in these social groups. I would like to know if you would allow the public to start to address those issues in the budget portion? Because I think that's a lot of money.
For this evening, we held a public hearing on the budget. I mean, citizens can ask questions about any expenditures at any time. Just as a point of clarification, though, the New Jersey State League of Municipalities provides recertification classes for many of our employees, all right, that need to maintain certifications and/or licenses, and are very important to us in lobbying, all right, and in advising us as to legislation and how it's moving and what the effects are, and whether or not they, on our behalf, support it or oppose it. I think you'll find that any question that's asked of me or any other commissioner here will always be answered. The answer may not always be something that you'll like to hear, but it'll always be the truth. But input from citizens is always welcome, as is input from commissioners and anyone else who want to make things better. If there are reductions that we can realize, then by all means, we're doing that. I mean, I can speak for my department alone. Going back some years, we had 30-some-odd employees. I'm down to 13 that manage 110 acres of parkland and all the buildings, all right? In addition to insurances and other ancillary duties that come up. So cost reductions have been realized. Moving forward, we will continue to look and scrub out the budget. And yes, if citizens want to make suggestions about different expenditures, well, then we will welcome that.
27 people going to Atlantic City overnight for at least one night, sometimes two nights, and nobody coming back with any useful information doesn't seem very beneficial to the taxpayers. The reason I say that is because I'm on free mailing list. I get the New Jersey League of Municipalities update every day. It's free. I just wrote a note, an email, asking about the police and fire salaries, because that's available as of today. And when I spoke to the finance people down there, they said, Nutley, we never asked for anything from them. We never, last year, we asked for the salary ranges. And it was prepared by the league, but when I asked Mr. Evans last year, he said that he did not obtain it from the league. So I guess I'm a little confused. Why are we saying we need the league, but we don't use the league? We could save a lot of money.
Well, Mr. Moore, I'm not sure that that statement's entirely correct. We use the league. I know they've been very beneficial to my department, and I'm sure all of the other departments over the years. And as far as folks attending the League of Municipalities convention, all of the people that go put in requests to go and have to identify which of the courses, all right, and/or recertification classes that they need to attend. So each commissioner makes those decisions based upon need in their department.
And I'd like to make a suggestion. I will conclude with this. Make that public prior to everybody going, so that the public has the right to see why we're sending 27 people down to Atlantic City and what the township receives and a benefit from it. We can do that now, because I believe it's in September. I think it's September. September, October.
Mr. Moore, I will absolutely take that under advisement. Thank you very much.
Turn your video on and your microphone on. Sir, do you wish to address the commissioners? We can't hear you. Turn your microphone on. Sir, you're on mute. Please press unmute. On mute? He's not muted for me. No. Sir, it appears your microphone is not working. Sir, you're showing as being unmuted on our end. I don't know what the problem was. Do you still wish to address the commissioners? Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess we can resume the executive session that we went into before. Do we need another motion?
We need another motion, but if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, you should probably address the public that we will not be coming out after that to take action. So they don't have to stay on if they don't want to. We're not coming out to do any business.
Okay, did everyone here, Mr. Janet Tempo? We will be going into executive session, and we will only be coming out to adjourn.
And we'll be in extensively for hours, so they should probably know that instead of waiting.
For hours. It's not that we're looking to preclude anyone from being informed as to the actions that we're taking, but we have much business to attend to this evening. Personnel, potential litigation.
And contract negotiation.
And contract negotiations. Move it. We hit all three. We have a motion. A second.
Sorry, the microphone's on. Okay. Permiss the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed into closed executive session, and therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss personnel, potential litigation, and contract negotiations. Correct? Thank you. Be it further resolved that the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending indoor anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The time is 9:26.